This is the monthly Board of Commissioners meeting for the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Monday, April 26, 2021. And we are still meeting under the virtual virtually until we can meet in person. And I'm noticing that I forgot to bring, I'm so sorry, I forgot to bring the the statement. But I do remember in my mind, it was Governor Northam's Executive Order 053. Da-da-da, and he has allowed us to meet virtually, and I will find that and can come back and remedy that.
I think you're, I think you're good.
Wonderful. Okay. Well, Leslie, could you do the roll call?
Chair Redker.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblatt.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Dr. Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Slaughter. Mayor Walker. We have a quorum.
Okay, and we, we have a new commissioner. Well, maybe I'll just introduce her. Well, we'll just go ahead and introduce her now, heck, and then move on. But Maddie Green is with us. So you can note that in the roll call. She applied and was chosen to take over Mr. Osteen's position. The rest of his term, and then I assume if if she wants to, she could always apply and do a second term. Maddie, do you want to say hi?
Hi, everyone. I'm just here to complicate things. So we have two Commissioner Greens.
I, I hadn't even put that together, huh? Awesome. You want to say a little bit about your background? Just so we know where you're coming from?
Sure, I've been attending the redevelopment meetings with CRHA. Because I was an intern at Legal Aid Justice Center, I'm working with Emily Dreyfus and some people with FAR. So I'm excited to continue working with CRHA and see, see where development takes them and all the other projects that y'all are working on. So happy to be here. And I'm, I'm just finished my program as a social worker. So that's kind of my new background.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome. Okay, so now we'll have our moment of silence. Great, thank you. So in terms of our general announcements, I would like to say Maddie Green is joining us, which is great. And then if anyone else has announcements, you can chime in. I'll just note for anyone who's listening, the meeting announcement, and these are generally regular meetings. I know there's going to be some new meetings coming up around redevelopment. But we have our next board work session Thursday, May 13. We need to figure out what we need to talk about at that point. We have our regular board meeting, May 24. Safety meeting, April 27 and May 11 at 6:00 PM. Always with the same link, and there's a passcode that we can give you. If you don't have it already. The next redevelopment meeting, I think, is first Thursday every three months. I think it's next week. First Thursday of every month. It is currently at 4:00 PM. And then Resident Services Committee is every second Tuesday of the month. So also coming up. Does anyone else have any just general announcements or meeting notes? You want to share? Okay. So we'll go on to our first set of public comments, and FAR can share any meeting notes they might have. There may have some meetings going as well that they would like to tell us about. Let's see. Okay, Brandon.
Good evening, CRHA Board of Commissioners. My name is Brandon Collins. I am an organizer for the Public Housing Association of Residents, which is FAR. And we are the federally and locally recognized Resident Council and Resident Advisory Board for Charlottesville. Not a whole lot to report today. As to Betsy's thing, I believe next week we are holding the first of one of our Back to Basics workshops. And we're actually doing those, a series of those throughout the year. With some collaboration with the City of Charlottesville and with CRHA. I believe our first one is going to be focused on relocation in a broad sense. And then we're looking forward to going into May, hosting a few of our good old Positive Vision workshops, where we're just going to break it way back to almost the starting point and and work with residents and do an asset-based approach to thinking about the future. I did want to say, welcome to the new Commissioner Green, which makes Lisa the old Commissioner Green. I don't know if chronologically that lines up, but I think maybe it does. But welcome, Maddie. I, I think it's important as a new commissioner, and y'all are going to have two newer commissioners in a few more months. To recognize how special Charlottesville is compared to some of the public housing struggles that are going on around the country. And, and we're really doing amazing work and considering where residents and FAR were with the Housing Authority five or six years ago, we've all come a really long way. And I think it's, it's showing. And we urge you to get involved and be an active commissioner in the active work of CRHA. We do have some expectations. We know you were really pushing forward to get to the end of March and turn over a new leaf with HUD. And we'd very much like to hear how you feel things are and if there really is sort of a sense of relief after that. And where things stand with HUD. And remind you of our expectation that the amazing work that you did to get things in shape. Some of that amazing work needs to turn into amazing work for current residents. Particularly with maintenance improvements in their homes, and we think you are super poised to do that. And just want to remind you that that's a priority, along with resident safety, which continues to be difficult, but high priority. And remind you that Phase One activities are awesome and amazing and another historical changing point for this community. And Phase Two at South First Street, the work continues, and I think we're all looking forward to looking forward. And what that might look like, and encourage you all to be very active in that conversation. And, and really get prepared to do some super good thinking. Lastly, well, two last things. One is, we did want to say, we know y'all have been working hard. We know that John and Kathleen and the rest of the CRHA team has been working really hard over the past year under intense circumstances with a housing authority that was under a lot of scrutiny, with a pandemic, and with the expectation of a resident-led redevelopment coming to fruition. And I think it's time to recognize that that really is amazing work, and we're going to hold off criticism for anything, probably for a little while, as we continue to continue our good resident relationship with the Housing Authority, assuming that that carries on. Lastly, on Wednesday, one of my most favorite people on the planet, somebody who's a friend and a mentor, but is also a staff member of CRHA and also the Chair of the FAR Board of Directors, is being honored by the National Lowcome Housing Coalition. And really encourage you all to attend that. I know we got a workshop right on top of that right afterwards. But it would mean a lot to me personally if all of you were to be in attendance to give Joy her honors. And, and to let other extremely high-profile dignitaries that are going to be in attendance just, just how highly we think of Joy and how much we need her and Joy. I love you and keep up the good work.
Can I just ask a quick question about that before we lose Brandon? I teach exactly during that time, and I can't. So I'm just wondering, is it going to be recorded? Is there any way to watch it afterwards?
I think so.
It may be recorded, but your students would probably love to see such a thing, an important local and historic and national event. There's reasons why they have these kinds of honors. And I, you know, just throwing that out there, the world should know.
Awesome. Thank you for that reminder, too. Would anyone else like to speak before we get going? There's always another public comment near the end of the meeting as well.
Doesn't look like anyone is raising their hands at this time.
Okay, we'll move ahead. We have approval of minutes, and they are from January, and I was looking at them, and it's oddly when we announced that Mr. Osteen was leaving the board. So it's nice, you know, that happens to be on Maddie's first meeting here. Yeah, so we just need, we need to, well, approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the January 25th, 2021 minutes.
Second. Leslie, can you do a roll call?
Chair Redker.
Yes.
Chair Goldblatt. I'm sorry, Commissioner Goldblatt.
At the time, yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Dr. Henry.
Approve.
Commissioner Slaughter. Mayor Walker.
Yes. And we have the new Commissioner Green, but I would assume abstain since you weren't at at the meeting to approve the minutes. Great motion passed. Next, we have a Safety Committee update. Ms. Goldblatt, would you like to?
Yeah, so the, the main thing, we've had some active meetings, and residents have done a really great job talking and drawing a list of priorities that they have around safety and the ways that they, at least initially, and this is a work in progress. But the ways that, the ways that they want, if there's going to be security or any groups in public housing communities, the ways that they want them to behave, what they expect from them, and what they think, what safety means to them. They've talked some to about the importance of community, and I think staff has really heard that and thought creatively about ways to do community building. And so the, I've taken very extensive notes. They're up on the CRHA website. And so I encourage you, if you want to see them, that you can go and look there, because the list of priorities is, is really lengthy and the vision of what people want. And I think right now that they're like what residents, the other thing that I've heard very clearly from residents in those meetings is a real sense of urgency. People are really concerned about the change in the seasons and the summer coming on. And they feel as though they need a concrete and firm plan, that they need to understand what's going on, and they need that to be communicated in terms of what safety is going to look like. So we've heard that there is, there's a full-time doorperson position at Crescent Halls, and there's been some other conversations, but people really want to know what the chain of command is. And they also want to, they want there, there's been, so Ms. Hyatt was really great in the last meeting, talking about staff increasingly building relationships with residents so that residents feel like they can come to staff when they have concerns. But I think something that we really need to have for residents is a really clear plan in the short term, certainly in the long term, so that they feel safe moving into the summer.
Thank you. Anyone have questions or additional comments that might have been in some of the meetings?
Is that a plan going to come from the subcommittee to our committee, and is this something we'll vote on, or is this something we need to come up with? I mean, I know the residents have come up with some of the plan.
I, my understanding is that we've been generating like policies for an RFP, and then that RFP would come to us. You should correct me, Mr. Sales, if that's incorrect, but that was my understanding.
Yes, it will come to the Safety Committee, not the overall board. Due to the dollar value with the contract will be.
Oh, yeah, and there was one other change that was proposed that we said we would bring up here. We wanted to make it so that as many commissioners as wanted to attended those meetings, but then they would need to be publicly noticed. The only hesitation that Mr. Sales and I had around that was not wanting residents to feel like they can't speak freely if there's press present on the call. I don't know if there's a solution around this. And so I did want to raise this in case people have thoughts. I do. I mean, I do try to take really detailed notes, but we don't record those meetings for a reason, and I, I don't know if people have thoughts about this, about ways to encourage residents, especially in this difficult moment where it's hard enough to share to feel like they can be very open, while also having as many people who are decision-makers hear what they have to say.
I'll speak up just in my mind. I've purposely not been, I mean, you know, we all have to spread ourselves out and go to all sorts of different meetings, and I just felt like having, I, I just feel like since you all have been making progress and maybe getting to know each other somewhat, I would hate to just be someone sitting in there listening that people aren't sure. I don't know, you know, if they need someone who doesn't live there in their discussion. So that's why I haven't been joining in, because I'm, you know, I'm, I'm very, very concerned and interested, but I also feel like maybe the less people that aren't actually living in the neighborhood are speaking, maybe, you know, that just adds to a little bit of strangeness, you know, for people coming in. But that's that's just my thought.
I do think, though, there, as long as folks know that you're a commissioner, a board of commissioner, someone who can help to move things along. I don't think that there would be an objection, but I guess that's something that you can ask the folks on the call. But as long as you're a commissioner and you know that you are the Board of CRHA, I don't think they would have a problem with it, but I'm just speculating.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah, I wonder if you could bring that up with some of the people the next meeting and let us know. Because I, I could go either way. I mean, I'd be happy to join and help, but I'm also, also like, don't want to push in if people are feeling comfortable having, you know, some discussions about their personal safety. Okay, all right then. Anyone else? Next on our agenda is discussing other subcommittee assignments. And we had sent around a sheet that had listed who was interested in being on different committees from the commissioners, which is ongoing. We can still, you know, we can add, move people as needed. I think the one that, there's some that still need to get either restarted or started. So I think we might need to get with make sure that there is a commissioner and a staff member on each that will get together and make that and figure out what time works. The Maintenance Committee, I don't think has met since Mr. Osteen's been gone. And then we have a Personnel and Policy Committee, which we had Lisa Green and Nakia Walker signed on to work on, but I don't think they've gotten the staff and the commissioner, you know, we just haven't gotten a time set. The, the one I think, and actually I see that it's the next item. For redevelopment, I think we have to clarify, it's such a big subject, and honestly, I feel like, as Brandon said, everyone's been working really, really hard, not only through COVID and all of the extra work that came with, you know, come with that, but also redevelopment, and we don't necessarily have you know, I think we're doing amazing, but I have to say, you know, that's a whole other job, really, you know, like this whole taking on construction projects, doing all the planning. It's a lot of work. So anyway, leading to, I think we're at a, a point where now we need to separate the redevelopment of future sites into a group. Maybe it's the group that's always been doing it. Maybe we add more people. That's got to be looking forward to the next tax credit applications and longer timeline and you know, where we'll move like two or three years down the road, just to even start thinking about relocation and all of the, all of the pieces that go with that. But then and Ms. Glenn Matthews and I spoke on the phone today, so she can chime in on this, but I think then maybe we break out like, now we have three projects, you know, we have the South First Street Phase One, so the people involved in that and making sure that's going well and the construction's happening as it should and all of that. Crescent Halls and the residents that are living there during that renovation, you know, that's a big one, so that should have a separate meeting. And then South First Street Phase Two, which is ongoing. And the group of women who had been doing the design work with Bruce Fordell's group, you know, are back together. And so that, that kind of is its own piece, too. So pulling those four things apart, the future and the three current projects. And getting that at a structured time, I think, will help just sort of put those in different categories, because sometimes we talk about redevelopment and it all goes together, and it's just a lot. So so that, that's the thinking behind those. I don't know. Kathleen maybe can speak to the timing of when those might be and how she envisions that. So, yeah, so does anyone right now on the, the, let's call this the future-looking redevelopment committee. We have myself, Mayor Walker, and Lisa Green, but we haven't been able to get the time right. And I'll be done, you know, in the end of June, so let's think about who would want to move in on that piece. And Lisa, do you, do you want to figure that out now? Do you want to join meetings or wait till? You're mute, you're muted.
It, it doesn't matter to me. I, I know that, that too many commissioners makes us have to do that, you know, the public, what's it called? The announcement of the meeting. So that's kind of why I had been sitting out. I mean, it's nice to hear, I guess I could sit and listen and not participate. Mr. Oberg, is that correct? Or is it going to have to be publicly, is this a public announcement meeting if I join in as the third person?
If, if you're there, it's a public meeting. It would just be, I mean, technically, you're probably right that if you just were silent, it would not be a problem, but I I don't think you should put yourself in that position.
How, I will say, the meeting is already announced, so every redevelopment meeting is announced, so that shouldn't be an issue. Do a public notice.
Okay, all right. I was just thinking along the lines of the same thing as safety, and so I, I, that's why I stopped going to that, so they didn't have to be announced. I mean, anytime I can sit in a meeting that I have the time that it's not, you know, at the same time as when I'm working, I think it's always, you know, helpful to sit in and find out what's happening in the different subcommittees. So I'm more than happy to participate whenever.
Okay.
I will ask that, my name is Green without the E on the end.
That's my fault. I take full responsibility. Um, I will change that. And then the Safety Committee, we had Ms. Slaughter on with Ms. Goldblatt chairing it, and I think Ms. Slaughter and I are both done at the end of June, so maybe if other commissioners want to think about who might replace Ms. Slaughter if she doesn't reapply to be a commissioner. I'm not, I haven't talked to her about that, but potentially there could be a new person there. Resident Service Committee has been myself and Dr. Henry, who I know has been busy in her own, her own. But again, a, a place where I want you to think about, you know, as I move off, who might pop into that. That generally is a place where service providers that, that work with their residents come to either give a presentation or talk about what they're doing, or just a place to coordinate between a lot of different partners. And then the maintenance one is kind of hanging out there. Ms. Slaughter is there, but we're going to need someone to hop on that. To just, you know, if you don't want to say no, that is fine, but if anyone is interested, that would be a good one. And that, that is sort of an ongoing, just making sure residents are heard and are getting the service they need with, you know, lots of details about what's going on. But Bronno is running that, and I think just finding the right time so residents know when to call in and, and give input on that. Okay, and then we had Ms. Green and Mayor Walker on the Personnel Policy Committee, so they need to get with maybe, I don't know who they should start with, maybe Kathleen? Yeah, Mr. Sales.
That's going to be Mary Lou is going to be chairing it, our Finance Director, Finance. And myself.
Okay. And what about the Financial, Finance Committee?
Both of those, the Personnel and Policy and the Finance Committee will both be chaired by Mary Lou and myself.
Should we just make that as one? Would that help reduce the number of? Or do you think there's enough, enough meat?
I don't, I don't see.
They're pretty different. Oh, hey, I think they'll have a pretty different focus in terms of what we need to do personnel policy-wise versus financial oversight.
Okay.
And I don't see the Finance Committee meeting every month.
Maybe quarterly or something?
It, yeah, probably quarterly. There won't be enough information to provide monthly that, that we can't provide during this board meeting.
Right.
So the finance report is ran at the end of the month. Our board meeting is at the end of the month. It lines up. If we meet in the middle, you will be going back to what you already talked about at the last meeting, which would be this meeting. It'll meet a lot during the budget, because I think that's going to be a committee that works on a budget, but we're not there yet. Where we're, need to meet every month or a couple of times a month to work on the budget.
Okay, and right now we have Mayor Walker and Dr. Henry on the Financial Committee. And on the Personnel and Policy, we have Ms. Green and Mayor Walker. Just reminding everyone, we need to get these going, or at least, you know, as, as long as we get these groups that can find times, you know, we can start getting it in the, the monthly or quarterly schedule. And then I wanted to bring up with the group for redevelopment, we're, we were sort of at the crux of start, you know, we really need to get moving on the, what, what we're going to do next, the next moves, and get it in front of residents quickly to get feedback. And I thought the Board of Commissioners may not have been, you know, some of you just joined last summer. I feel like we could use either one of our work sessions or do a retreat or something around redevelopment to jumpstart that next piece. We have some some numbers and some ideas from Jeff Meyer and Dave Norris and, and Mr. Sales, you know, from gosh, months ago redevelopment meeting, looking at potential future sites and, and some numbers there. But we need to, I think it would be great to sit around and kind of get an update of what, how decisions had been made. And then maybe rethink and clarify how decisions And then maybe rethink and clarify how decisions will be made going forward. So I guess I wanted to hear from you all if, if that would be a topic for a work session or if you think we need a bigger chunk of time. But I think it, it needs to be soon, because we're going to need to be moving quickly with whatever site is next due to the tax credit application cycle.
Is there any way to bring us up to speed on what Dave and, and I forgot who you said just earlier, has presented as a potential next steps? That would be helpful, even if that's sent to us, that would be helpful to have that information.
So we do have a redevelopment committee meeting scheduled next week. And there will be an update from Jeff Meyer on that projection. Anyone who doesn't make that meeting, we can send it around to all the commissioners to review.
Oh, great, thank you. And then, so at that meeting, there'll be a lot of other, you know, other partners there all thinking together about what needs to happen next. So, Mr. Sales, I don't know if you have something on par for the, what would it be? The May work session? But that could be a topic that we go into deeper at that time.
I believe.
Or what else? Yep, go ahead.
I believe what we were thinking, the nonprofit discussion came up a couple of months ago. But we can kick that can, uh, to focus on redevelopment. One more month.
Well, should we wait and see? How about this? If everyone can come to the redevelopment meeting or whoever is able to come, we'll talk then. And then if we feel like we need to have that work session, if people either can't join for that discussion, maybe we do that for the May work session and move the non, I hate to move the nonprofit, but move it down one. But if enough people can come and talk during the redevelopment update or the redeveloped, sorry, the redevelopment meeting, we can go ahead with the nonprofit work session. Does that make sense to you all? Somebody, yeah, tell me what you all are thinking.
Is that, um, it's legal for a lot of us to come to that CRHA redevelopment? Because it will be already noticed? Okay, cool.
Yeah. Okay.
I just have to double check my calendar and make sure I can come to this particular one.
Okay. So we'll try to have a quick overview at the next redevelopment, redevelopment meeting at the beginning to kind of kick off the thinking and just talk about how the first decisions were made, the, the voting membership, the, the way it was done. Just to, for the commissioners who haven't been before. And then we'll see where we get on that meeting. Does that sound okay, Mr. Sales?
Yes, that's, that works for me.
Okay. So maybe we'll, we'll get far enough that we can go ahead with the nonprofit discussion.
The, I think maybe if I missed it, but sending out when those four different meetings are happening. Because I think, I think I was at a meeting on Friday. It's been that kind of day, but the P2 meeting. And I had to work that in. And I don't know if we did polling or whatever at the beginning, but I wasn't available during the, I think it's one or so on Friday. And so now I have to rearrange some things in my schedule to try to be able to make that weekly. So I think once people know, they'll try to, it won't always work. But, you know, you'll at least know when, especially since they noticed that you can pop in.
Yeah.
You know, if you, you know, if you can just get the, get the dates together.
Yep, and, um.
Coming to that meeting too. And I'm trying to work it out, but I had to rearrange some things in my schedule to be able to make it.
Glad you, yeah, I wasn't able to do that, that meeting. And maybe that's to the commissioners. I failed to, at least in my own brain, make clear that we should each, I think we all need to be involved in the future redevelopment talks. But in terms of the current three projects, you know, maybe we can all choose one to focus on. So there's consistency within the group of residents, you know, working on that project. So at least for Crescent Halls and South First Street Phase Two, there's actual residents living there. And it would probably be helpful if, you know, each of us took one of those on so that especially during construction, we'll actually know more about what's going on than rather maybe spreading ourselves all over the place. But we'll, we'll get those to you. I know Ms. Glenn Matthews has been working on trying to organize all of those meetings. Okay, um, you, you ready to move to Executive Director update? Mr. Sales?
Yes, that is good. So good evening, everyone. Like Brandon said, we have gotten to the new fiscal year. So HUD will be looking at our programs to see how successful we are, were with meeting our corrective action plan. I will say we won't really have a decision from HUD until the, I would say July, August, around that time period. The financials, they're, they aren't due to HUD until the end of June. So then they'll have some time to audit them and go through them as well. That's going to be an area where we're not going to meet it. And they weren't expecting, expecting us to meet it. They recognize that they failed to provide funding to address, to actually meet the goals that they identified. So we created a financial plan caps last month that was approved by HUD. And that released about $600,000 to the Housing Authority to work on some of the items where there were some deficiencies. So we have two years to actually get there financially. We're projected to get there at the end of this upcoming fiscal year, so March 31st, 2022. We have until March 31st, 2023. And we did get an email today that there may be some additional shortfall funds available. I'll find out probably tomorrow whether we qualify. But they sent a generic email to all the housing authorities, letting them know that about $25 million was available. We did get an email on Friday about our physical inspections. HUD will start doing the physical inspections sometime this year. We don't know when yet. They'll give us a four week notice. We received the email today from the Richmond Field Office requesting a meeting later on this week to talk about AMP4, which is Mickey Madison Riverside and Scattered Houses, to figure out what we've done so far this year to address that. This year is going to be a little weird when it comes to audits, because they're going to inspect your properties, but they're not going to score them. So scoring them is how you get out of trouble status. And they really are having a hard time justifying scoring them. Because for a long period of time, housing authorities were not doing regular work, routine maintenance on the units because of COVID. So they're only focusing on emergency work orders. So that's part of the reason. Plus, some individuals aren't allowing housing authority members inside of units. Like when we had the firm from Maryland come inspect all of our units, we had some households that rejected them and told them they couldn't come in. So HUD is also allowing their inspectors to accept that denial as well. So they're going to have a hard time scoring us. But that puts us in a tricky situation, because we depend on the scores. Just like last year, we didn't do the CMAT, but we really needed it to get out of trouble status. So they're going to figure out how they can still score us while not having that scoring affect funding. Because really, that's going to be the big issue. If you have a bunch of poor scores, then it really hurts your funding. One of the areas where we have not done a lot of work around the caps, at least I can say I have not, is the Board of Commissioner training. So it was identified in the Corrective Action Plan that we needed to focus more training on for the Board of Commissioners and for the Housing Authority staff. We've done a lot of training for the staff, but we haven't done a whole lot of training for the board. So we know there's the online self-paced training Lead the Way. And I believe some of the commissioners have already completed that training. But it's an online training through HUD and it breaks down the different areas of public housing governance. And it provides a certificate at the end of completion, which we do need to provide to HUD. So I'm, I'm going to send out that email to all the commissioners who have not received the certificate from, just so we can focus on that. I think it takes probably a couple of days if you dedicate three hours to it. I know we all are pinching for, for minutes at the, at the time. But that is something we do need to focus on.
Need to be completed, I haven't completed it.
One more time?
When does it need to be completed?
That was a date that was projected for last year. And I discussed with HUD that a lot of commissioners have not been on for a year or barely been on for a year, and they know that. So they did extend that. So all new commissioners are required to do it within about a year.
Okay.
So some of the other things that we need to talk about are board retreats for training. Delphine Carnes, our attorney, has offered to do some board retreats to focus on training what the roles and duties of commissioner are. Fara just did one at their last board meeting. It was really, really good. So that is something we should potentially discuss during either a retreat or a board work session just for the duties and responsibilities of a commissioner.
Mr. Sales, so I think, I believe, yes, before you were hired was the last time we had a retreat. And we had worked with the Center for Nonprofit Excellence. And I, I, at the time, we paid whatever it was to become a member so that we could get a reduced rate to, to work with them. So I'm just throwing that out as another possibility. And I don't know if you want to wait and do it. You know, we're going to have two more commissioners starting July. If you want to, you know, wait and, and kind of jumpstart all of that with the retreat or if you all will have to chime in and let me know what you're thinking on this. But I'm happy to do one before I go. But I'm also thinking ahead is, you know, if there's two new people coming in, spending all that time, might, it might be helpful to do that in August or September. I don't know.
If it's an individual link, can you just send it to folks and let them do it at their own pace or time or whatever?
Yes, I'll send a link around for the individual training. But the individual training is, is not the greatest. It doesn't go into detail much. It was very high level.
Extremely un-user friendly. It's like a very hard interface to navigate.
So what we're talking about is doing some in-person training as well with, with our attorney, who has done it before with other housing authorities. When new commissioners come on, like an onboarding process. But this will be for the entire, entire commission. And it will be in person or through Zoom, it wouldn't be the self-paced one. It'll probably be a couple of hours. We'd have to make a decision tonight, but at some time we have to make a, a decision on that one, because that is a cap. So if we say we're going to do it once we have the two new commissioners, that's fine. But we'll have to hold ourselves to that.
Are you just asking like, are we willing to do retreats? Or do we have ideas of when? I'm not sure, I guess I'm not sure what question we're asking.
Well, I'm guessing a retreat is probably the best way to do it. Otherwise, it will take a whole meeting. So the question is, do we want to have a retreat sooner or later?
Yeah, that, I mean, I, I defer to what makes the most sense in terms of getting out of troubled status. If getting one on the books sooner is going to expedite that process, I'd be very happy to, to do a retreat. I mean, there's plenty of stuff that I think it would be helpful to know more about. But if it's, I mean, if it's going to really stress staff resources in a moment when people are already spread pretty thin and we should wait until we get our new commissioners, then that also works for me.
So how would that work if we did it now and then we get two new commissioners and they've missed that? Do we then go back and do that again later this year?
We can either provide them with the recording of the meeting or we can have those commissioners do one-on-one or two-on-one with the attorney. And typically, that's how she does it, because it typically isn't an entire board getting onboarded at one time.
So I have a question a little bit, being a, a new commissioner who's come on just in this pandemic and doing only virtual meetings. I don't feel like I kind of know the rest of the, the commission as well as I have known other boards that I've served on. And so my question to that is, if we waited with this, would you envision this being something that we would do in person and also get a chance to work with each other more closely so that we could kind of get to know the, the board a little bit better? Or, or do you think that, I mean, I guess what am I, what I'm saying is, do we have any idea when we may go to, to not virtual meetings and, and in-person meetings? Because my, I'll say what my preference is, is if, if we're going to be able to do this in person, I would love to get together with the board just to get to know folks. Because I, I just feel like we haven't got to do that.
I guess I'm one of those people that probably would prefer to go on virtually. You know, just like the school has the two options, whether you go back to the classroom or work virtually. Because I'm still waiting to see what happens with all these variants and stuff. So I'm not in any hurry to get around seeing people. You know, that's just my own bias.
Absolutely, I totally understand that too. That's what I'm saying is I don't know how that works at that point. And, and I didn't know, I mean, are, are we waiting? If the governor takes away, I guess at the, at the beginning of each meeting, if the governor takes away the mandate for virtual meetings for local governments, I, I think that's where this meeting falls. Do we have then the option to stay virtual?
You do not at this point. State law does not allow that at this point now. It's very possible that that's going to be changed. But at this moment, if the governor removes his emergency order, all local entities will be required to meet in person again.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's been a concern I have, because I do think even with this virtual, that I, I think sometimes we've reached more people, being able to kind of just tune in. So I think that, that, you know, look for some good that's come out of some of this bad. That, that I do think that people have been able to stay more engaged that, that have the technology. I realize technology also is an issue, but for some folks. That's just, you know, I am certainly not wanting to put anybody in danger or myself or my family either. I just didn't know what our options were if he takes away that order.
And could I add, we don't have, I think we, this is probably something we need to do pretty quickly. But I know City Council has a policy for not, for being able to, to be virtual for a meeting. I, I don't know what it was. It was, it was before the pandemic, so we wouldn't have even called it virtual. But like, that someone could call in. We don't have that. So maybe we need to think on our own about how we would, you know, besides the governor's order, like how do we set a policy so that, you know, two of us can be online while the other of us are in a room and still be able to vote? I think, Mayor Walker, do you, do you know what the city policy is? I'm sorry to call on you, but I think if we could come up with what we want to do, that would help. Because we haven't had this before.
Yeah, we have a policy outside of COVID, but you're restricted to the number of times you can use it per year.
Okay.
And so hopefully with, if the emergency order is lifted, that they will provide options for hybrid, you know, possibilities that you could kind of work around those. I think it may be three times a year that we can. that we can use. You know, that we can join the meeting by phone. It was phone at the time. I don't even think it was video. And so, but I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, but hopefully they'll provide hybrid options.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping. I would love to have. I don't know about you all, but I would love to have hybrid because in the past, when we were in person in City Hall, it was already a bad, it was a bad setup. Sorry to city people. But to have us all sitting up high and then residents that come sitting in the seats looking up at, you know, and and it wasn't the most accessible. Our residents had to go and like, you know, I remember we had to have buses coming from Crescent Halls to get over to speak to the board. So I feel like and maybe we could envision what we want these meetings to look like coming out of the pandemic. I mean, maybe we can do them at the community centers and have see if the city would still help or how we would broadcast those. And then we could have commissioners come in person or not depending on where we are in the public health locally, but why don't we put, you all want to think about that and put that on our next meeting to have a quick discussion about how these meetings? And maybe we can hear from far and residents. So that we could be proactive about, you know, when we, when we are allowed to meet. Like what, what do we want that to look like and what's possible? Because it's been great to have the cities help for all our virtual, you know, monthly meetings. I'm not sure that that would continue if we wanted to do hybrid or if we would need our own you know, experts in. Well, everyone's almost an expert.
I just want to return to this question about when we might have a retreat of some kind. If the standard for other boards is that they have retreats however frequently and then incoming board members, whenever they cycle on, have, like they watch the recording if it's recorded or they have individual discussions with the lawyer. And that's how Delphine Cars does it with the other sites, then that might be, there's a reason maybe we want to think about that model for ourselves moving forward, in which case getting a retreat on the schedule and then saying like, this is what it's going to look like moving forward. So that, I mean, it's not, not to say that every other housing authority does things right and we do them wrong, but this might be a moment where like, we can turn to housing authorities that we say like, your board is running really well and be like, we're just going to adopt that model. And then there's no reason not to do a retreat sooner. Especially if there's this big question about like, if and when restrictions would be lifted and what it would look like after that.
So.
So Mr. Sales, what the heck?
So we're going to get the board, the Lead the Way training, get that email out. That will accomplish the cap of having a board training. So that's the bare minimum that we have to do. So some commissioners have already done it. I'll get the link out to everyone else for everyone else to complete it. Let's shoot for a board retreat after we get the new commissioners on. Is that what I'm hearing? And that way we can set some procedures for onboarding during that time and also do a training. And we also need to look at our five-year plan that we said needed some work. So that can be the beginning of that process.
Does that sound good to everyone? I think Ms. Goldblatt, what might be helpful? And I'll be gone, so I don't want to, you know, you guys will can figure this out, but because our turnover of commissioners is June 30th, maybe it's always that we have an August, September retreat every year to get to know each other and reaffirm the mission or the big, you know, priorities. And that, that's what the Center for Nonprofit Excellence, they were good at that, the kind of community building and getting, you know, onboard with kind of a mission and organization. They weren't doing the training that Ms. Carnes could do, but you know, maybe combining those two in a day or something like that every, just have it set for every September or something would be a good practice.
So I do have some programmatic updates for the HCV program. So we now have a total of 1,011 individuals on the waitlist for the HCV program. So we got over 1,300 applications in two weeks. We've sent out $50 eligibility letters. About a fifth of those are living in public housing now. So we will have a large amount of vacancies added at some point, same thing that we had last year, but last year we added more than, added more than 10 of them. We currently have about 17 mainstream vouchers on the street. We have leased up one of them. We were awarded 40 of them in December. We've sent out all the eligibility letters. So we're really waiting on the participants to respond with documents. We fully caught up on our HGS inspections. We completed 157 of them in the last two months. For the public housing program, we had 30 vacancies at this point. We have a large majority of them, I think it's 21 of them are in the mod status, which means they're going to take longer than 30 days to turn. They're really the worst units we have at this moment. We gave seven of them to Habitat. They weren't able to turn any of them during a time that they had the unit. So we've taken them back and we are going to slowly start turning them. This month, all of our turn team has been focused on Crescent Halls. They turned 10 units at Crescent Halls for the redevelopment process. We had to relocate families on the eighth floor to units that were available throughout the building. We've also started that process for the seventh floor. So we have not turned a lot of public housing units on the other sites. We focus solely on Crescent Halls this month. We have a $0 tenant delinquency account. We received some funding from the city to take care of back rent. So we have $0 in tenant delinquency at the moment. We also have zero pass to recertifications for the public housing program and the HCV program. The recertifications were both things that we failed previously on audits for both ACV program and public housing program. Staff updates. We have a HCV manager starting on May the 3rd. She's coming from Raleigh, North Calana. She has about 15 years of experience running the ACV program through compliance. So that's an area we've been really weak in based upon HUD audit. So that's going to be an area that should turn around really fast. Raleigh's a much larger voucher program than we have. I think we're probably about a fifth of the size of their program. So her caseload alone is more than what we have total. So that's going to be a really big addition. We also have one property manager starting May the 17th. She has, I believe, is three to four years of tax credit experience, which is the program we're going to. So that's going to be really good. That's going to be the only tax credit property manager we have on staff. We are looking to hire one more. We have an interview. I believe it's on Wednesday with a potential candidate. We're also looking at a compliance specialist that will tie in the public housing program and the tax credit program, just to make sure that we are bringing in clients that qualify and making sure we're charging the right rent and not overcharging any family. We do have some vacant positions. The redevelopment project manager position is vacant. It is posted on our website and several other sites for redevelopment positions. We have a property manager with Flytech experience position posted. And we have two maintenance positions that are posted that are open. They're maintenance two and maintenance three positions. So they're highly skilled. We've been looking to see, that position's been open since I want to say November or longer. It's one of those that is very hard to fill because there's a lot of people going after the same individuals. PHA, AHIP are all going after the same candidate. So it's a very competitive process and we've had a very hard time filling those positions. And that is all I have. Unless there's any questions.
Why was Habitat not able to fulfill the that did they have, is it materials? Is it the work? I mean, did they have a reason?
Yeah, they had some staffing issues. They focus a lot on volunteers, so they had a shortage of volunteers and the two staff positions they had working, they had a hard time filling those positions and keeping them filled. So we provided all the material. They just needed to do the work and they had a hard time with capacity.
It is hard to find folks in this field right now because of the building and upkeep that's happening in the construction industry right now. It's insane.
When we met with GMA two weeks ago, we were talking about some of the positions that they're hiring for. And they mentioned like the carpenter and skilled labor. I mean, they were at $20 an hour minimum. And it's hard for anyone in property management to compete with that. I mean, we're paying more than some of the other traditional housing places, but we are competing against construction firms. That's when we're losing out and that's what's happening a lot with us.
I see it every day. Jobs are behind, I mean, every day people are looking for people to work. So if y'all know people that wants to change jobs, it's not easy work. The other thing is not easy work. So it's not something a lot of people are going into.
Well, we're always trying to poach other employees. So every time I go to a site, property manager probably not going to want me there. We were doing HGS inspections, Brano, myself, Melinda, we were talking to all the maintenance guys. Hey, you looking for a job? We pay really good. It's a good housing authority. So I think we've, we've been able to possibly get two of them. So I think we're going to schedule interviews with two of those guys. But at some point, they're going to saw us stop coming because we're taking all their guys.
Hey, could you, is there a list of somewhere that you're looking for and what experience? And let me rack my brain and see while I'm working during the day if there's somebody that pops in mind.
They are all on our website, but I can see.
No, it's fine. I can look at it. I can look for.
Other questions? Commissioner Green won. I was thinking, I don't know, I mean, other people may be interested, but given your background, I know when HUD came to do inspections and it was helpful when Mr. Osteen would walk around with them just to see what they were looking at and like, they just had, you know, they had some bizarre things they would score us on that none of us would have thought of. So I'm just throwing that out your way if you're interested or anyone who is interested, but I thought you particularly probably have some really good insight into inspections.
Well, potentially. I was a construction project manager in a past life and I've spent the last 20 years in inspections, so I might be able to help a little bit there. It is something I like. So I'm more than, you know, whatever you guys think. I want to just be used where I'm most useful. So whenever y'all tell me what that entails and I can see if I can't work that in during the day. If I have enough time, I can rearrange schedules, too.
So we should be getting some more guidance sometime this week. And we have a meeting on Thursday where I'm sure they'll let us know or protect the schedule for inspection. So I'll make sure I share that with you.
The agency also has some extra booklets that break down the inspection process, what they look at and how they score it. So if anybody's interested in reviewing those to see what's up and coming, I think I have four extras at the moment.
Could I swing by and pick one up at some point or?
Yes, ma'am. They'll be housed at the Sixth Street Community Center. Just pop on in anytime.
Okay.
Okay. Other thoughts, questions? Okay. I suppose we're ready for the second round of public comments.
Did you want to have a redevelopment update?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I, I guess we somehow skipped that in all the discussion about the redevelopment committee. Please, Ms. Glenn Matthews.
Hello, everyone. There's a lot going on with redevelopment right now, so I just wanted to get everyone up to date. So let me start with Crescent Halls. On the 14th, we had the Crescent Halls redevelopment kickoff celebration, which was hosted by the Crescent Halls Tenant Association. And we were all glad to get to be part of this event. GMA has been mobilizing on-site at Crescent Hall. There's a construction fence up, gravel drive in the back. They're getting prepped on the eighth floor. Work on the first floor is starting May 17th. And the substantial completion date right now is set for November 25th, 2022. Our relocation coordinator, Ms. Pointer, has been really busy and doing some great work. All of the ninth, nine, eighth floor residents have been relocated into temporary units as of April 19th. The seventh floor, we're doing bed bug canine inspections just to be careful. And the 10 seventh floor residence relocation process has begun this week. And so there's a lot of movement happening there. The relocation assessment team meetings continue to be hosted virtually on the third Monday of each month. See, the next meeting is Monday, May 17th at 2 o'clock. The Crescent Halls resident release space and programming meeting is hosted bi-weekly on Fridays. We just had one this past Friday. This is a meeting about ways for residents of Crescent Hall to have spaces outdoors to get away from noise and also just spaces in the community that might be good relief spaces. See, the next meeting for that is Friday, April 30th at 11 o'clock. The first relief space is going to be in the circle in front of Crescent Halls. We're going to be working on getting some benches out there and there's already a pathway being marked out by GMA and Martin Horn. Conversations continue with everyone about impacts to bus stops with relocation at Crescent Hall and South First Street. This conversation will continue as more research is done on options to improve bus stops and services through federal funding applications and exploring options of increased city funds for CAT. And I'm sure Mr. Sales will probably have more updates soon because he's been working really hard on that. I'm going to move over to South First Street a little bit. The redevelopment partner group has begun meeting once a week as, as he was talking about for phase two. We've been just working as a small group just to get a little more organized and be a little more nimble to bring information back in a more orderly fashion, just to get things moving with that project. The part of, it's called the Part 58 that was put in by Ashley to the city is moving forward. We need to circle back around because the BRW Architects and Collins Engineering are still working with site plan amendments. And there's a lot of work happening with that. We'll hope to have more updates soon. The resident, this covers resident design work and coordination that's continued since our light tech submission. We're also discussing pre-development and the contractor hiring process. That's one of the main reasons we started having the small P2 group meetings. These are just small group meetings, talking about how things work. So then we can work, you know, in a larger group on moving forward. There's, we're all making sure we understand how the process is going to get started. The first resident consultation meeting on South First Street Phase Two is going to be held, it's now going to be a hybrid. As it was decided last night at the resident planners meeting, it's going to be held virtually and on-site at South First Street on Wednesday, the 28th at 5:30. And let me see, I'll share a quick flyer with you all on that. And let me see, I'll share a quick flyer with you all on that. So we're going to be, can everyone see that? We're going to be in the grassy area where we had some meetings last year. And I've pretty much pulled everything together today. The one thing I'm still searching for is someone to help with maybe some filming and just some audio visual help I need for amplification. We haven't quite figured that part out. As I said, it was about five, a little before five last night when we got the request, so we're pulling that together right now. But there's, we're excited to try out this virtual model, but we also really want to keep everyone safe. So BRW is continuing to meet virtually right now, but they're also talking about having a hybrid model for the resident planners. And I think our meeting on Wednesday will be kind of an experiment to see what works and doesn't work. As we spaced out the chairs and everything. With all the balls in the air, we're focused on improving communication. That's a big part of breaking out these groups. As Betsy was talking about earlier, Jake Kessler is helping us to improve just communication. He's going to be helping me get more information, more detailed information for our reporting. Jeff Myers has just been amazing and really patient with me because I've been asking to look at getting more specific sheets together, reporting budgeting. And I ran those by the P2 group on Friday. And it looks like we're going to go forward with that to have it as an attachment going forward, to have more information available to everyone. So I think paying attention to dates, times, having a timeline in front of everyone, it's going to be a huge help going forward. The, as we were saying, the redevelopment committee right now, it's meeting the first Thursday of the month at four. There's been a lot of discussion about what the perfect time is for that. And we're also going to be talking at the meeting next Thursday about what the frequency should be for that meeting. So a lot of, just a lot of different conversations happening there. We're also going to be talking about whether we're ready to move forward on discussions of what's going to be the next project. So it's going to be a very important meeting. The monthly neighborhood update meetings between the general contractors for each site, GMA, Martin Horn at Crescent Halls and Breeden at South First Street are about to get up and going. They're trying to think of different ways to have those. I think we're going to start virtual, but we're still looking at that. Breeden sent out a flyer recently for residents, just with a contact number in case there were concerns. And we're working with GMA to have something similar. We're probably going to be looking at having a meeting with them next week with residents. If we can all settle on a date that works well for everyone, that's still in the works at the moment. And I'm hoping to hear back from the Tenant Association tomorrow morning about that. Our Section Three program, Go Joy, has been really ramping up. Joy's in her new office at West Haven. We're working on posting a new revised Section Three policy soon. We're also looking at having an MOU with the city and other community partners that we're going to be engaging with on a regular basis. Having some job fair set up with Breeden and hopefully soon with Jimmy and Martin Horn. We're continuing to meet, to work on building programs, exploring the possibility of, well, we know we're going to need more staff and probably a committee as this program grows. It's just been really great to see the Section Three program get off the ground. And I'm hoping to be able to have an intern be able to be part of the program. Betsy's been helping us with that. I can't give a better opportunity for a student than to get to work with Joy. And let me share a flyer that Joy helped put together. And I'll let Joy talk for a minute if she wants to because she's had a user response. Can everybody see that?
So, um, part of what we did was to put this flyer together because what Breeden sent us was just a listing of what's needed. And we sent this out. People have been calling, but most of the calls I got today, they wanted to know what the job entails, which tells me that they probably don't have the credentials because other folks who have gotten, done this work would know what some of this mean. However, most of our residents probably won't know what some of these work entail, even though they may have done it. So like, we're going to try to do another flyer that have some kind of description of what each topic is or heading is. And the other thing that about four people called today and they wouldn't give me, they wouldn't give me their last name, but I had their number and was able to call them back and just be able to get their name, first and last name was how much is it paying? So they wouldn't give any commitment. They didn't want to sign up right away. They wanted to just know, you know, okay, how much is the job? How much are they paying? That kind of stuff. And a couple of them basically said, I will get in touch with the contractors myself. It's been kind of tough. So I sat outside today and was just asking people as they go about in their car and all, they need a job. And we got two additional people to say, yes, I need a job and I have done some of this work. So what I plan to do is just to be out in the neighborhood a little bit more with these flyers and everybody have the flyer. They've been, I got in touch with a couple of agencies and they have posted the flyer. But I'm not, we're not getting that like beaten down the door kind of response right now. So I think it's just word of mouth and just seeing people and talking to people. But I think if we have the description of what the job entails, we might be able to get even more people. So that's all I have. I did, for Breeden, I think I sent you all five potential people today. And for GMA, just for one and a half position, I have seven people who is rooting for the skip horse and just a part-time laborer. So most of the folks who are on that list doesn't want to do any, they feel like they don't have the experience to do what Breeden is doing. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Your program through Section Three, you know, I got that list. Do you train the people for those positions? Because I think that might be some of the confusion is that the folks think that it's a training program for those specific things and not something where you're expecting them already to have a skill.
You are absolutely right. That when, when most of the folks called, they were like, I'm interested, but is there a training for it or will they do on-the-job training? And basically, you know what, my response to them was that we know that we're going to be doing some training around some of the construction, but I could not tell them when or what we will be able to, you know, what we will do soon. But right now, we were just looking for the positions that both contractors say that they, they need help on.
That's not going to help many of the folks that are living in public housing then.
So we do have a partnership with, with Holly Lee in the Department of Economic Development to do the job training for construction. They had, Joy was one cohort last year, right?
Yeah, one cohort.
And they're talking about doing another one this summer. COVID really slowed that down. I think it was a total of 11 people that started, Jordan?
Yes, and four graduated.
Rogers, go ahead.
I think they were able to put several of them in jobs with a construction firm. And we've contacted them that completed that training to see if they would like to apply for the positions that are open. So we are working on the training model. We got, we're working now with Holly Lee to how we can approve the program. We had, I mean, only four people graduating. That's really not that successful. So we want to figure out what we can do to improve that. So we're working with the residents and giving them what they need to be successful.
So part of, and part of that too was that Network to Work, which we had an MOU with, was going to provide the wraparound service for the 11. But the pandemic hit and then they just stopped seeing any client and wasn't providing anything. And then went to virtual and we had a couple of people who had some learning problems, you know, with virtual. Virtual is hard for me sometimes. I'm in training. Anyway, I would rather do it in person. But they, and a couple of them had some personal things that popped up and they, but so that's why they need the wraparound service that can help them. So Frank, I can never get his name right, from Network to Work. He was on vacation last week. He did call me today, going to set up an appointment for the folks who already is, is working with the Housing Authority under Section Three. And also the folks who graduated from, the four ladies who graduated from the carpentry class to get them in, to get their support. And then hopefully the names that I sent to Kathleen them, that is going to go to Breeden. If they hire them, hopefully they'll follow up and let somebody, one of us know so that they too can get signed up for Network to Work. But I heard Network to Work program has changed a little bit. So that's why I was trying to see if I can get Frank to set up a meeting with the Housing Authority so we can understand, along with Rich Scholar, so we can understand what has changed. And if, you know, they're not, if they're requiring them to be working first before they give them the support, that's a little different from what was happening before. So I just got to better understand how to wrap around services and who else we can get to be able to help them if they, you know, fall off the wagon or something personal come up, that kind of stuff.
So, so Dr. Henry, to your point, we understand that we are on the back end trying to catch up with the current projects.
Yeah.
And so we're going to, starting where we are now, well-prepared for Phase Two when that project does start. And even for Breeden, I mean, for GMA's project at Crescent Halls, we're going to be well-prepared for those. We missed the ball on Phase One. We're trying to catch up now.
But I think, and just, and just, and the four women who graduated, I got it. The three women that graduated, I was able to get in touch with who, they came and they signed up and said that they want to do it. I'm still trying to track down one and the gentleman who also graduated.
And just, I think in terms of looking at the training program as an opportunity, I don't know, you know, what was put in those contracts. I don't remember right off. But part of like doing this differently, they should be participants in the training of the individuals who are from the community. One of the other things is I don't know all the Section Three requirements is, but you have a lot of people, and we've been talking about this with the Safety Committee, who may not be current, you know, people who are currently causing, you know, any other problems that's going on in the community, but they may have participated in the past. And so you're going to have limits on, especially a lot of the males in the community or whether they could participate in a training. So I'm also interested in if someone grew up in public housing or if they're a member of the broader community, like what does that look like on their ability to participate in the Section Three? And if we are training people and able to provide the stability for a long term, then that serves the city very well. So I really hope that that partnership can be strengthened there, even with Home2Hope and some of the employers that ended up in other places like the Fountain Fund on our own. We had to provide those wraparound services to them. We had to provide the initial trainings to them. And we had to pay them while we were doing that because they were not in the fields before. But what we said is that we believe that you could do this. And I think one of the selling points are, you know, Kathleen and Betsy was talking about this earlier, the long term, like we are already trying to talk about the next phase and what projects are next. And so that stability that people probably haven't had, even though it's really difficult work, that the potential pay increase over time and the ability to move up in a program that's kind of centered around and catering to their success. Also, you know, one of the thoughts I had when someone said something just a few minutes ago, I'm tired today. Sorry, but when we talk about the like interdisciplinary aspect of something like this, I'm thinking of, we are talking about what does diversion look like to be able to train somebody in a career, keep them like out of the criminal justice system in some way, which gives them an incentive that they may not have to sign on for something that they don't think is possible. Those are the type of things I think we're going to have to do to get creative, to, you know, pique people's interest.
So this is something I've, I've kind of talked with some folks in where I work as well. Because again, when we're talking about having, we have a, we have a real shortage of folks in this industry, in this area. People can't find people to work. So if there's a training program, I, I wonder, I saw, and I'll have to find it, Joy, and I'll try to send it to you. It's a program that's in Pennsylvania, maybe Philadelphia somewhere, that folks come in and getting some of this experience in high school, like K-Tech and in transitioning. And then there's an automatic way to have a job. One of the things that we're realizing in local government where I work is some of the, this is a very transferable job. If you don't want to be in construction this entire, your entire life, it transfers into some other opportunities. Inspections, for instance, if you've got construction background and you've got the training in construction in any of these kind of fields, you get the training and the certifications, then you have an opportunity to go for a local government and inspections. And one of the things, and so there's, we're having a hard time finding inspectors in the community. And so that's a, you know, that's a pretty steady job where you work for a local government, you have insurance, you've got, you know, something where you can also build a career if you don't want to, we call it swing a hammer from, you know, you know, get started in this and then be able to move. So there's a lot of growth opportunity. And so I was, you know, let me see if I can find that. It was something I saw. I think it's Philadelphia. It was kind of a thing from, you know, starting some of these, these skills in high school, plumbing and carpentry.
So I have, I have a friend of mine who served on the Coalition Board with me, who is now working for the Housing Authority in New Jersey. And they just started a self-sufficiency program slash Section Three program. It is connected. And so she said she would send me some things and ideas that she was having. But when I was talking to Kathleen, I was just telling Kathleen that for our population, and it's not demeaning my population at all, but I, even me, even myself, if you, if, if I'm looking at something, I need to know, okay, so what does it entail? Because maybe I don't think, I am a bricklayer, but if I'm out there working my garden and I'm laying the bricks in a different way, I'm a bricklayer, right? So someone who called today said, you know, I don't think I have much experience, but I work with my uncle and we were laying bricks and we would, I'm like, you got some kind of experience. Give me your name and give me. So if we have some kind of description to tell people along with how much it's paying, I think you'll get more people to like seek. But, you know, we're taking baby steps right now, but those are some of the things that I'm seeing that for our that for our population, we're gonna, like you said, it's gonna need training. Um, I have like eight people who were saying, I want training. They're on another job that they don't like, but they want the training. They wanted to give up that job just to do a training where they're making fifteen dollars an hour. So that should tell you something also. So it's been interesting, but Kathleen and I, we went around and around and around and around about how we should do it. But then all this weekend, over the weekend, um, most of the things that people were asking me, which I could not explain fully. Was one, what was the job description and two, how much? So they want to know how much they're gonna be making. So that will be helpful going along and I, and I, um, and the learning curve, um, you know, um, the young, the, the person who was having the difficulty with Zoom was the first one who said, sign me up, I'm in. Even though that person didn't graduate. So that ought to tell you something. It's not that the person can't learn. They probably was just having some issue with how they were learning over Zoom. So.
And I, I just want to address Mayor Walker's point really quick. The program is for all low and very low income persons in the community, uh, no matter the criminal record. Uh, no matter their band status with the housing authority. And really I think I focus more on individuals who have been, uh, a little bit of trouble for the housing authority. Because those are the examples that we can point to when we're talking to individuals in a community that may be causing some of those issues now.
Well, I haven't been turning down nobody.
Yes.
If they come in here, I sign them up.
And, and so Kathleen, um, touched on the section three policy. That needs to be an updated because there was an update from HUD. And we need to identify clear goals that we need to hold every contractor to. Uh, no matter if it's a fifty thousand dollar project or a thirty, forty million dollar project. Because section three should be a requirement of all federal funding. So we need to get that approved so we can put it in their contracts. So with, we think that should be in front of you guys within the next month. Uh, there were slight amendments to it.
Well, this is really exciting. I know it feels slow, Joy. But, I mean, I just, I'm really excited about it. Can I ask, is there any, is it possible? And this is more, I guess, for the contractors. I'm thinking of summer and, you know, high school kids and I don't, is there any way, you know, do they have, uh, summer positions open where students, you know, I'm just thinking if they learned a little bit over the summer and then they come back the next summer or they come back the next year. Um, or does it have to be sort of a full-time commitment?
Of course, for section three, it has to be a full-time commitment.
Okay.
One of the requirements, it can't be contractors can't hire individuals for the job. They have to hire them for their company. So they have permanent employment and it's not temporary employment. So that's, that's a requirement. So what you're saying will be temporary. So they wouldn't qualify and it wouldn't be a section three compliant.
Is there a, uh, and this is the same conversation I have with the city. Because even if someone agrees to do the project, they don't necessarily buy into that mission. So is there a way to take some of that funding and the housing authority hire them as employees? So that they understand the culture that they're trying to create, um, versus kind of leaving people out there with all these different employees who might not necessarily buy into that mission. And then they're left to the standards, um, that they've set before, which they probably don't have similar people on staff. And so it's just, uh, having the right person who understands the dynamics. I'm thinking like even, you know, I was talking to someone over the weekend, if someone shows up late for work. Normally someone is like, you're out without even considering like why that person is out. But if you have a program that's kind of centered around making sure these people are successful. Then you ask them more questions other than just threatening them with like two more times. You're late, you're out. Which turns some people off and especially people who've just missed, been mistreated by a system for a long time. So, uh, I just think it's invaluable. I don't know if that's possible, but if there was a way for some of that money to be funneled back to the housing authority to hire people. I don't know if section three allows that or whatever. Um, so that you all become the employer. I don't know how you feel about that. I'm just, it's my thought. I'm just sharing.
So the section three, there's several ways contractors can be in compliance. And so they can provide funding, I think it's, um, ten percent.
Ten percent.
Ten percent of what the total contract amount is. Uh, they can provide that funding to the housing authorities, section three program, which can then be used for training, on the job training or for creating jobs. Um, so most companies don't do that. Because ten percent is a lot of money, depending on how big the project is. So a lot of them don't do that. And typically if they do do it, they budget it in. So then the housing authority ends up paying for it anyway. So that's one way, but what we have told the contractors is, hey, we want you all to hire people, but Joy is the in-between person. So you gotta keep Joy in the process. So if you're having an issue with the employee, you don't just go fire that person. Hey, you gotta talk to Joy. Because we have wraparound services. You haven't completed your job, which we're adding the contracts to have the section three policy in there with the goals. Um, you haven't completed your job. If you just get rid of them without talking to Joy. Joy has to be involved in the process. Because we think it's important that we're building the people, uh, and that's what we have to do. And that's what with section three, that's the only way we're going to do it. So we've had those conversations and they know that this isn't a, hey, we're gonna check a box by hiring people. It's, hey, we're gonna keep Joy in the process who we're having issues. Let's help, let's get her to help us fix those issues.
Okay. Um, more questions or thoughts? And maybe someday, what you're saying, Mayor Walker, maybe someday there'll be so many, Joy's gonna need some help and help.
Oh, um,
Yeah.
No, um, um, you know, outreach is not what, you know, you just can't sit in one place and do outreach. You have to be out like in, in the, um, in the, in the community. And, um, so it's, it's, I'm ju, I'm just hoping that we can get together with network to work to figure out what is it they can provide. And if they can provide all of the things that we need, then where do we get the other services to wrap around the clientele? So for me, that's where, um, you know, once we get that, um, someone said to me today, I need this, I need that. And I'm like, just give me, just give me another week or so. So we can try to figure out, um, where we can get it from. Because you know, there are people who, you know, they might need a pair of shoes or they might need something, right? But section three doesn't come with any money to provide those things. And so we have to find other, um, resources. But, um, I was talking to someone, um, about the program or they were talking to me about the program and we were trying to think about it. You know, we know a lot of people who are electricians who can, you know, remodel a house and flip a house and do all that kind of stuff, right? And it would be nice if we could get to a point where CRHA is doing its own training. And, 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 um, I love, a smart person sat down and was talking to me about that. And I was like, you know, that's a very good idea. And, um, you know, yeah. So that's kind of where, you know, I, I can't get there right now. Getting, making sure John and Kathleen get the people so that Breeden can be happy is what my goal is for right now. Then we can plan the program a little bit better going forward because, um, a lot of our folks got issues. Not only that, you know, you got kids at home who are learning through virtual that they, they have to maintain. And if they're on the phone or if they're checking in with their kids because of, you know, whatever is going on, they can get dismissed. And so those are the kind of things that we have got to get out there because, you know, things are different now. It's not normal anymore, right?
So many more steps.
So many more steps, yeah. And funds to go with it. I don't want to just plug the, um, I noticed that the, in the infrastructure bill that Biden have done, he have put seventy million dollars of, is it million or billion? I can never get it right. Um, to help with public housing. So I think we should be watching that just so that we can sign on or advocate whatever we have to do to get rid of that fair cloth law. Anyway, that's my little political speech.
Cool. All right. Um, well, let's go ahead and move on. Thank you guys. Anything else before public comment that we didn't need, we didn't report? Okay, let's go ahead with, um, public comments. Um, please let us know if you'd like to speak.
Guys can use the raise hand icon. And if you're calling in by the phone, you can press star nine. Looks like we have Brandon Collins.
Good evening again, commissioners. Brandon Collins. I work for FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. Wanted to just let you know that, uh, we're still here listening. Um, it was a, a really great meeting, um, discussion on a variety of things. And it sounds like everybody's really ready to dig in and do work. I'm not going to chime in on anything super specific, um, but something that Joy just mentioned. I figured I'd clarify for any commissioners who aren't aware, the fair cloth amendment is what caps public housing and the creation of new public housing. And also that if you lose any, you're never getting it back. Um, and if there is the opportunity to, uh, to get rid of that and, and potentially have new public housing, that would be a big deal. And a, and a game changer for Charlotte, Charlottesville and, and for the country. I also neglected to mention section three, uh, in our previous comments, but that is a, a high priority for FAR as we're moving forward. You know, y'all have a lot of priorities, but that is, is certainly one of the ones that are there. And we're, we're, you know, hopeful that we can do our part to, uh, to make sure things happen. COVID really put a, a damper on some trainings. Um, and it's, it's my belief, um, just seeing what's happening in various other communities. You know, the more you do with section three, the more you're gonna do with section three. So, you know, can we get over the hump? Get the investment in, into the community, investment in training, investment in people, uh, and services. But, you know, once we can get over the hump and start getting some folks hired and making money. It's, it's gonna make everything really blow up. And so I think we're all committed to that. And thanks to Joy for her hard work on all of that. Uh, anyways, got a lot of meetings this week and next week, so I'll see y'all out there in meeting land.
Thank you. Meeting land. That is, that's, that's good. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak?
Does not look like anyone else is raising their hand.
All right. Um, okay, then I guess we can go ahead. Finish up and we'll work to send out the, the several, several meeting dates um, to everyone to try to get all of those straight and figure out who wants to plug in to which, um, which meetings. Um, and also be thinking about, you know, at the post-COVID, uh, if you're talking to people, how, how those meetings should look. Cause I do think it's a good opportunity to change what had been a rather stagnant, depressing, um, scene in City Hall. Okay, so, um, I guess we just need a motion to adjourn.
A motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Awesome. Oh, sorry, Leslie, we need to, um, do the roll call.
Sheriff Wicker?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Matty Green?
Yes.
Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Slaughter? Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you all. And, and again, thank you to the staff in FAR and everyone who's been working really hard.
Night, everybody.